The council open, would everyone please join me to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We are minus a couple of councilors this evening, one, two that are gone. Under introductions, our city recorder, our city administrator and special guest this evening, Mr. Wallace Lean, our land use counsel, our librarian, our public works director, our land use director, and our police chief under staff. So we're here. The rest of us are identifiable by these things. So, anyway, additions to the agenda, is there anything? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, Mr. Lean.
I would suggest, your honor, that we deal with those at the beginning of the public hearing for the amendment and at the beginning of the call-up procedure rather than now.
All right, thank you, because there will be some. We have an introduction of a rare intern. This is one that only occasionally is visible, I guess. Mr. Fleishman, is he here?
He is here. Yes, he is.
I just got that, Hank.
Oh, well, that's what it says, "Rare."
So if I'm the one doing the introduction, it's my pleasure to introduce to the council Isaac Court Mead, who's been working with us for two months now. It was early September that he arrived. He was scheduled to appear before you in early October, but was out at a training session that week, and then you all didn't meet two weeks later, so here we are tonight. RARE, for those of you who don't know, is an acronym that stands for Resource Assistance to Rural Environments and is a program of the University of Oregon in association with And Isaac will be here for an 11-month tour of duty. He's working approximately half-time as the resource coordinator, is that what you're calling yourself?
Program coordinator.
Program coordinator for the Friends of Old Town Stateon and will be working about half-time, doing some work for the planning department, helping us carry out the council goals that you adopted earlier regarding housing strategies and economic development strategies.
So Dan, has he done any recent events that were hugely successful?
Well, I'll let Isaac talk about that. So sure, go for it. Stand at the mic.
Hello. Yeah, we just had our ghost tour and chocolate walk. I don't know if any of you guys were there. Pretty fun. I really enjoyed myself, and it went very well, I'd say, for the first year. And then we also had trick-or-treating downtown. I'm sure a lot of you guys were there. That was really fun. We ran out of candy a lot quicker than I had thought we would. That was a great event. But yeah, thank you, Dan, for introducing me. It's great to be here. Been a lot of fun getting to know people in Stateon, getting the lay of land. You know, now two months in, I feel like I've kind of gotten to know everyone and can really get started seriously on working. So yeah, I'm excited. I'm excited for the rest of my time here. Thank you.
Am I going to read things either in the Eugene Emerald or the Register-Guard or some other university publication saying, "Rare interns report from the rustic folks in the sticks," things like that? Am I going to see any of that?
You might. You might. But I mean, this program's been around for 20, this is the 24th year. So we're pretty well-established within kind of the realm of rural Oregon and people from all over. There's 25 of us all over the state, so.
Isaac is tail-end Charlie. For those of you who don't know, I'm councillor Cronquist and live in the old castle, the Lough House, and was the tail-end of the chocolate walk. It was a stunning, stunning success. Well done to the city and well done to the Friends of downtown Stateon. I had not anticipated a tenth of the people you did, and the mood was awesome, and thank you. It was very well done event.
Yeah, thank you. It was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it. I think we did so much better than even I had expected. So definitely going to do it again next year and make it even bigger and better and include more people and more excitement and more chocolate.
Okay, good. Thanks. Other questions or thoughts? Thanks for being here. All right. Under the consent agenda, two items, October 2nd, City Council minutes and Resolution Number 968, City Administrator Evaluation Process and Forms.
I move we accept those as written first?
Okay. I have a motion. Sir, a second, please.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. And if you've all had a chance to look at that, let's go to a vote. Would all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Have a majority voting in the affirmative, we'll go with that. Okay, let's see what's next. I suspect it is a, it is, it's a public hearing. Ordinance Number 1013, Amending Land Use Code Regarding Fencing Requirements for Subdivisions and Partitions. And before we start, good evening. I have to read this. Good evening. My name is Hank Porter, the mayor of Stateon. I will be presiding over this meeting, or this hearing, excuse me. This is a time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number 10-09/17 concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code requiring the installation of fences around certain subdivisions and partitionings. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments, the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing? I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? I hear none. We are ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The hearing this evening is on proposed amendments to the land use and development code that would require that certain partitions and subdivisions have a fence erected around the subdivision. Those that would be affected are subdivisions or partitionings that have frontage on either a arterial street or a major collector street. These are the more heavily trafficked and typically higher-speed streets within the city, and the requirement would be that there be a fence erected on the boundary of the subdivision or the partitioning adjacent to the right-of-way of those arterial or collector streets. My staff report gives you a list of those streets. In my analysis of all of the vacant lots in the city that are large enough to be subdivided, there are only six vacant lots within the city limits that are zoned residential and have frontage on one of the arterial or major collector streets. The proposed amendment, if enacted, would again, would require that a fence be erected along the frontage of the arterial or major collector street, would require that that fence be erected prior to recording the plat for the subdivision or partitioning, and would require that the developer establish a lot owners or homeowners association that would have responsibility for maintenance of the fence. One of the reasons for that is we have experience in the city with a fairly large subdivision from 50 years ago or so, in which the developer put a concrete block wall around the subdivision along Gardner Ave, but made no provision for the maintenance of that block wall, and some homeowners have maintained it and others haven't. It's been removed in a couple of places. So the idea is if we're going to require this fence to be, or wall be erected, that we need to make sure that there's provisions in place for it to be maintained. The amendment that you have in front of you, as recommended by the, was recommended by the planning commission. In my original suggestion to the planning commission, I had suggested that they require that the fence be either concrete or vinyl as a matter of long-lasting construction and minimizing maintenance. They chose to remove that suggestion, but I would recommend to you that you consider including that in the final adoption. That's what I've got. My staff report has in it the recommendation from the planning commission, as well as the recommendation from staff and suggested amendments, suggested motions for your consideration. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Dan, at this point. Do you see any point in going through that list of the affected properties?
Well, I can read the list of the streets that are collector or arterial streets. If you'd like, it's Cascade Highway, First Ave, Shaft Road, Golf Club Road, Fern Ridge Road, Gardner Ave, West Ida Street, East Jefferson between Sixth Ave and Tenth Ave, North Tenth for one, between East Jefferson and Fern Ridge, Locust, West Washington, East Washington between First and Sixth, and East Santiam east of North Tenth Avenue. So those are the streets that are identified as arterial or major collector streets.
And that amendment, if passed, I'm going to jump in this for a second, would apply only to new applications for subdivisions and not existing ones?
Correct.
Okay, so temperatures and blood pressures, some that were going up a little bit can relax, I think, I hope. Okay.
And Dan, there are only six lots that are divisible in those areas?
My analysis is of the vacant lots that are zoned residential and are large enough to be subdivided, divided. There's only six in the city limits.
Okay, all right. Other questions from council? Thank you, Dan. Mr. Lean? Go ahead, please.
Dan, can you tell me, it says in July, the planning commission was presented with a request to consider. Who asked you to do this?
This idea came out of testimony that was presented to the planning commission during their review of the Lambert Place subdivision, where there were members of the public who came and requested that the planning commission require that the developers of that subdivision erect a fence along Kendall Way and Shaft Road. The reply at that time was, "We don't have the authority to do so." My recommendation to the planning commission at that time was, "We don't have in our code something that authorizes that type of requirement." And then after that was all finalized, it was that individual who came forward, wrote a letter to the planning commission, said, "Would you please consider this?" They discussed it, asked me to come back with suggestions, and then scheduled their public hearing. And that person is here tonight, and I'm assuming will testify during this public hearing.
So are you telling me that if somebody goes to develop a piece of property and you see a safety issue that needs to happen with that, that you can't address that without some kind of a law?
Absolutely. I mean, we can't be imposing standards on people that we don't have in our code.
Okay. So do you think that every situation would require a fence if you, I mean, is it, I mean, I just don't want to find myself in a situation where it really isn't, well, number one, I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of fences or requirements, anyway. But I guess I always, I don't want to have to backtrack or try and get out of something when, if there's a development that's going to happen, and there's no need to have, I guess, a fence there. That puts us in a position where now we need to require a fence when maybe we don't need one, right?
Yes, this would be establishing the requirement that in those cases where the subdivision or partitioning is on these.
Right, so that would be an added cost to any developer or builder that was doing something.
Yes.
Dan, how large are these six lots? How many homes could it possibly impact?
Some of them are large enough to be divided into two.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
And some of them, and one of them may be large enough to be.
Three or four?
No, no. I'm thinking of the, well, to identify it, the Christmas tree plantation on Tenth Ave and Pine has frontage on North Tenth Ave.
So if someone owns a piece of property that they can build two houses on, they would have to build a structure all along the thing before they developed their property?
They would have to, this amendment, if enacted, would require them to erect a fence along the frontage of that arterial or major collector street.
Dan, the properties adjacent to them in many cases don't have fences currently, do they?
Can you repeat that?
Properties adjacent that have already been developed don't have fences?
Some of them do, and some of them don't. Some of them have a mix of fences. If you go along Shaft Road on the south side, there's a mix of chain link and board and vinyl, and some of them have been maintained, and some of them have half-fallen over. You go on the north side of Fern Ridge, there's a white vinyl fence that was put up all along the entire frontage of that subdivision by the developer. You've got Gardner, like I said before, where a concrete block wall. So, you know, developers have chosen to do that or not do that over the years. This would remove the choice and establish that it be a fence of some uniform nature across all of the properties.
I agree with the concept, but it seems like a very tiny number of homes and a Band-Aid solution that's just going to be more patchwork fencing. I agree.
How do you make a homeowners association with two people?
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, is, yeah, it's going to be, you know, I looked at some of these lots, and they're just tiny. It's 12 houses, maybe?
Some of them may only be two lots, some of them could be more than that, but it wouldn't be all of these lots that would have the requirement for the fence. It would only be along the frontage of the arterial or major collector.
In that case, how does that improve safety for just two lots when you can walk quarter block and run right into the street?
The planning commission's idea was it would keep kids from running out of backyards into those higher-traffic streets by having a fence.
Which is an admirable idea, but.
Any proponents' testimony? There are no more council questions at this point. Proponents? Ah, there we go. All right, good.
Good evening. My name's Dan Morgan. I'm at 2195 Cardinal Avenue here in Stateon, and I come in support of this proposal tonight. I have in mind, and had in mind, the safety of children darting out in these busy streets, either falling a ball, or a pet, or another child. And I feel that even though, as you suggested, it's now a small proportion, at some point in time, you may be annexing in a larger development that would maybe increase that 10-fold or 20-fold, and at that time, you would have nothing in place to have the same thing happen that will possibly happen along Kendall Way and Shaft Road, of nothing or a mixed match of individual fences, some with no fences. I even took it one step farther, but the planning commission shot that idea down, that I said, "Any lot that backed up to a busy street like this, whether it was just even a single empty lot, should have a fence erected." And the planning commission, for a couple of reasons, shot that down. I'm here tonight to hopefully, have you change the mind of that, if it's possible that you can do that. My theory is, their theory was, while the developer or the builder of that home on that one individual lot may not have any children, but that doesn't mean they wouldn't have grandchildren, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't have neighbor kids going through their yard. And I approach this with the strict and sole authority of not putting financial burdens on builders or people, but for the safety of children, the safety of pets. And all it would take would just be one little two-year-old or three-year-old chasing after a ball, or a pet, or another child or something, and we could then wish we would have enacted this tonight. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, and if not, that's kind of my sales pitch, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other proponents' testimony? How about opponents? Okay, nothing there. Any general testimony? Questions from the public?
Second question?
Come up to the mic, please. Tell us who you are and.
Hi, my name's Tyler.
And where do you live, Tyler?
16972 Fern Ridge.
Okay, go ahead.
My question, just listening to the hearing this evening, was that the, was for only new developments and not existing? Is that correct?
Yes.
So the problem would still exist of homes with children and whatnot, that, so it would either need to be a, that was my only question I had, just to clarify my mind.
Well, and you heard Mr. Morgan say that he had tried to get that included, that any property fronting these busy arterials needed to be fenced on that arterial side.
Sure.
I have just new, just new developments, a new home built on an empty lot should be part of the fence.
Okay.
Not to exist.
Okay. Okay, then I misinterpreted his comment, but I, anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I, one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
So if I were to build my house, and this law passed, or this ordinance passed, and I were to build my house today, I would have to put a fence from the corner of Third Avenue to the middle of the block?
No. If the council enacts this ordinance this evening, or next week, it will only, this is making an amendment to the regulations that apply to new subdivisions and new partitionings.
Okay, so if I partitioned my property into two, then it would apply?
Then it would, if you were in a residential zone.
Okay.
Your property.
I'm just thinking about how ugly it would be.
Is not in a residential zone.
Okay, okay. I'd much rather look at someone's porch than a fence, I guess.
We jumped a little bit, but with any other public questions? And then questions from council on this, other council questions?
How do you, Mr. Mayor?
Right.
Dan, how does code enforcement hold a lot owners' association accountable for the commission of the fence?
If the fence were to collapse in part, then I guess we would, the code enforcement would cite the homeowners, you know, contact the homeowners' association.
That's what I mean, as an entity.
As an entity, they are the responsible party.
Can you have a homeowners' association with two?
Yes, sure.
But why?
Because it creates a legal entity who is responsible, as opposed to dealing with either multiple property owners, or multiple property owners who are all pointing their fingers at somebody else.
I understand the large picture, because I come from a family that does development, but with just two homes, it seems like you're either going to like each other or hate each other, and this, you know, you're going to agree or disagree. It seems like, to me, this is, it's a good idea, and I certainly agree with his contention about protecting kids and dogs, and wouldn't have no qualms about that, but because it's a Band-Aid, small-scale solution that complicates the development process for tiny, tiny areas, is applicable to only six lots, and then requires these people to construct a homeowners' association for just two or three homes, you know, that seems a bit onerous to me. I agree that homeowners' associations, when there are lots of homes in an area, are necessary, but it's just two homes.
While it's only six lots that are in the city limits today, as we annex land, for instance, out Golf Club Road or East Santiam, then it'd be bringing, and those properties are developed, then.
Can we make this a part of the annexation process? If we pick up the land on Golf Club Road, when we bring it in, as we annex it, can we require that that annexation be fenced? I think we already have, haven't we?
Not as part of the annexation process, but this is the mechanism to have that be part of the development process when that property is developed.
I understand on a macro sense. I'm saying this on the micro sense makes no sense. On the macro sense, it does make sense. But this is six lots, this is 12 homes right now. If we bring in a large parcel and put in 40 homes, or 105 homes on 40 acres or something, can we, can we make that part and parcel the annexation process, the fencing requirement?
I would say not without incorporating a provision like this into the code, which is what the planning commission has recommended that you do this evening.
Giving council and staff unlimited opportunities to pursue these various ends, could we not beat this to death tonight?
Sure we could.
Okay. Staff summary.
The provisions that you have before you, if enacted, would require, would apply only to new subdivisions and partitions that are adjacent to major collector and arterial streets, and would require erection of a fence by the developer prior to the plat being recorded, and the establishment of a mechanism to make sure that that fence is maintained.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this? We've got some possibilities.
Call the question?
Well, there is, what's that, please?
Deliberation.
Yeah, under deliberation. Go ahead. What do you folks want to do with this?
We need to close the hearing before we do deliberation.
Hearing's closed, thank you. I saw that on there, too.
I'd like to do nothing with it. Like to leave the code unchanged.
What would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll speak only to the material used, having had to deal with something similar to this on Burnett Street back in the day. The wooden fence, I think, is something that should not be considered. It's just too susceptible to the weather, and it falls down. So I see from a concept standpoint about controlling the condition of the fence, but I kind of tend to agree with my other fellow councillors about ownerism of it right now.
All right. Other thoughts?
You could have made mine clear that, you know, it's a great concept, and we all love kids and dogs. and dogs, but-
Okay. Priscilla, a thought on this, if any?
I, I agree with my counselors, I, other counselors. I think that this is an, an added, like I said, I think it's an added expense to developers and property owners that is unnecessary at this point.
Okay. Under council decision on ordinance 1013, we've got three possibilities. We can approve the first consideration of it, we can approve it with modifications, or retain the code unchanged, which would not require a motion. So it's up to you folks.
It wouldn't require a motion to retain the code unchanged?
Wally, how do we choose number three? Because I think we're all going to go for number three.
Well, I think you can make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, except recommendation number three.
I second it.
All right. I have a motion and a second to, to go with, to option three, retain the code unchanged, which effectively negates the need for this at this time. So Ms. Angelo, would you poll the council on this, please?
Of course. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
So the code is retained unchanged. All right, thank you, folks. Closing statement. The council's decision may be appealed to Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days in accordance with ORS 197.830. There was no motion and no action, but we throw that in because it's in the script. All right, new business, unfinished business, none, new business, council call-up of staff administrative decision. And Mr. Fleischman?
Thank you. So the issue that's before you for this agenda item is the review of an administrative decision that I issued about a month ago on an application for minor modification to a previously approved site plan. The code gives me the authority and responsibility to review certain types of land use applications, and, but the planning commission or the council members have the authority to call up those decisions after they are issued. Your task this evening is to decide whether you want to hold a public hearing on this application, whether you want to, or refer the case back to the, me as the original decision authority with the direction and how to proceed. And a third option would be to refer it to the planning commission to hold a public hearing. The property in question is the southwest corner of North Third Ave and Whitney Street in the Saniam Station subdivision. That property has been the subject of multiple site plan approvals. There were at least two that were issued more than 10 years ago, but never built. There was a third one that was in 2013 for what was labeled a seasonal produce stand. That, the site improvements associated with that site plan approval were installed in 2013, and the seasonal produce stand operated, I believe, for one season, and never returned. In early September, I received an applicant, this application for minor modification to the, the plan that you've got, the revised plan that you have a copy of in your packet was to remove the, the covered sales area for the seasonal produce, and instead to place an eight-by-20 mobile unit to serve as a drive-through coffee service establishment. I issued my order of approval in early October, and required that, noted that the code requires that parking areas be paved with asphalt or concrete. Back in 2013, the site plan approval that was granted for the seasonal produce stand allowed a gravel-surfaced parking area, but had a condition of approval at that time that said if the use was still in existence after five years, then the parking area needed to be paved. That application was presented as, that it was going to be a temporary use, and they didn't want to pave the parking area for something that wasn't likely to be there, and would eventually be some other development, and the paving would all have to be torn up. So I noted, in this current decision, I noted that, that the code requires parking areas to be paved, but also assuming that this was going to be a temporary-type establishment, since it was a mobile unit. They weren't not planning on having, connecting to the city water or sewer system, that, again, I made a determination that paving was not necessary, and imposed a condition of approval, that, two conditions of approval. One, that all prior conditions of approval from the land use files in 2013 continue to be met. And secondly, that the parking lot shall be paved if the use continues to be in existence in five years from the date of my approval on this application. So after issuing that approval on October 9th, I notified the planning commission and the council of the, the decision that had been made. Counselor Quigley filed the, the call-up citing review of section 1720 oh 6010B, which is the section that requires parking lots to be paved, and also mentioning in addition the previous traffic obstructions on Whitney. So tonight is not a public hearing. It is your opportunity to review the application, the decision that was made, determine whether you want to retain jurisdiction, and schedule your own public hearing, which would be December 4th, because we have to provide 20 days' notice to all the neighboring property owners, or whether you want to remand the decision back to me with some direction as to how I should either uphold my decision, or change my decision, or send it to the planning commission for their review, and for them to schedule a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Council deliberation on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I need to start off by announcing my ex-party contact. I've spoke to members of the community after I had called this up to Dan. That won't affect my decision in any way. And I also make note that I have driven by the location several times, and again, that doesn't sway my decision one way or the other.
Is this the proper time to acknowledge those?
Sure.
Well, I-
I've driven by the place. I mean, it's on Third Street.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. And I, I spoke with, after receiving a letter from the, what, applicant, spoke with her, and of course, drove by the place a dozen times. So, but I don't, not usually called on to vote, so doesn't really matter what I see or look or talk to. But anyway, I was there. You also?
Not with the intention of the coffee shop, but I have driven by the property, and Wally said to disclose that.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay.
Walked and biked by there, too.
Okay. Priscilla?
I received an email from the, I assume it's the person who is trying to open the business. I can tell you that I, in the first paragraph of the email, Brian's name was mentioned, Dan's name was mentioned, and appeal was mentioned, and I read no further. I, I, I have no opinion, because I have no, do not know, but I, I seem to actually be kind of in the dark. I, I said something about a coffee kiosk, and my, and my office manager told me it's all over Facebook, but I have no idea what's going on. So I'm, I'm totally neutral on this at this point.
That's interesting, because I didn't see that email. I haven't seen, received any email, so.
Never mind. I did drink coffee.
I got a letter. I was impressed. I called her back. Okay, what, done with that part of it. What, what else, folks? What?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Maybe it's appropriate, I, to give us the reasons why I decided to call this up. Is that appropriate?
We'd like to know.
So, sure. I looked at this several times in the course of it being approved by Dan, and I had a discussion with Dan at the time it was, his approval came across. And, yes.
Just a minute. I, I, I think that we're doing exactly what we weren't supposed to do tonight, talking about-
I'd like to know how it got here.
Oh, okay. I thought we were just supposed to decide whether or not we wanted to schedule a public hearing, or whether we wanted Dan to take-
We've got Mr. Lee here. Wally will keep us on the straight and narrow on this.
This is only how we got here, not why.
Yeah, it's perfectly appropriate to lay out. At this point, you have sole and exclusive jurisdiction over everything. So it is perfectly appropriate to discuss what the issues might be in relationship to where it might go, whether you keep it yourself, or whether you want to send it back to Dan, or whether you want to send it to the planning commission, and the substance of what you're going to be telling the people, either if you're keeping it yourself, these are the issues that we're going to be looking at, or to tell the planning commission or staff what it is that you'd like them to review that caused the call-up in the first place.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One more thing, would Keats' article, our case, communication with us create a conflict as well, or not? No, communications with staff are not considered ex parte.
Okay. Good. All right.
Sure. So getting back to that, what I believe, to looking at the way Dan's decision came across, is that, I have a couple of questions, and I think part of the code is missing, in my mind. And that tells me, asks me the question, poses the question for me, what portion of the code allows for carryover? Because I'm assuming, and maybe I shouldn't say assuming, going on the assumption, I guess, that Dan's making an extension of the ruling from 2013. And in doing so, if you look at that ruling from 2013 on the approval, it's based on a temporary use and a seasonal use. And so what he's taking now is taking the temporary and seasonal, and he's applying it to something that's going to be essentially long-term, not seasonal, not temporary, and the use is totally different. The use back then was a seasonal produce stand where people would come occasionally to solicit that vendor. And now we're going to have business going on there in a more routine office, in a more routine fashion, all time during the day, cars coming in and out of there. And so I don't think that the, I don't think the staff, the decision that Dan made is complete, because I don't know where that allows for us in the code, the legal or factual standing to allow the process for the new application. And so that's why I called it up, and that we, had the questions I had for, refer it back to Dan. It's basically, in my mind, it's a different use, a different site layout, and, but we're still using the 13, the 2013 approval. It's inconsistent to have five years of the gravel allowance back then, and now continue it to this time.
Another five years?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts on this, council?
I have a question, because I'm confused. Does it, I thought that, you guys keep saying that you need to make it asphalt if it's a parking lot, but I didn't, I don't think that the, are we requesting something that has a parking lot?
Yes. Yes.
A drive-through is a parking lot? I guess that's where my confusion is at. It's like, just a minute, what, are, are we talking about a place, are they driving up to a place and going into a place?
I didn't see any parking on the-
I'm totally confused.
There's requirements for employee parking and things Dan can address those.
Okay. This is a, so again, I'm telling you, I know, this is like a coffee cart place. Is that what this is?
It's no different from the Coyote Coffee, or the, without the three coffee drive-throughs-
Like Fastline?
And that's why I'm having, that's why I bring up the discussion, because the allowances back in 2013 had no building on it, right? That was one of the assumptions with the tent or whatever. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope.
Now, this kiosk, or however you want to define it, is still a building in my mind, and that's part of the code I want to see have addressed. And then it uses pieces of the homeowners' association talking about architectural design. Is that piece of that architectural design, the CCRs, is that the only portion of that that the city enforces? Or in agreement with, or makes part of the code, or the qualifications to get approval?
I, I don't want to say that it is the only part, but it is probably the only relevant part. The CCNRs included a set of architectural design standards that apply within the Saniam Station subdivision. The, while typically the city does not have the authority to enforce private agreements such as CCNRs, in this case, one, the city is a property owner within the subdivision. So therefore, we are a party to that private agreement, as a lot owner in the subdivision. The Saniam Park is within Saniam Station subdivision, and the city bought that, or, or was given it back in 2000 or 2001. Secondly, those, those architectural control standards were part of a stipulated judgment as a result of a circuit court case that was about the approval of the development, and so therefore, they are, I think, enforceable as we review development in the, in the subdivision. If that answers your question.
In part, yeah.
Okay.
And I assume that's what it was. I just want to make sure that we're applying apples to apples here, and we're doing this. So if the use had been in 2013, a coffee shop, there's no argument from my mind. But because the application at the time was different, and the use was totally different, and what it's currently going to be, I just had some questions. And I want to make sure that-
Yep.
You can articulate to us where in the code we can have that portion of it carry over, because we're changing the use.
In, in, in my mind, the use is not, the use could change if the site plan was not changing, without requiring a site plan approval or a modification. If a, if an application came in and said, we're going to build a retail store here, and here's the parking, and here's the store, and here's the landscaping, and they build the building, and then the retail store goes out of business, and a doctor's office moves in. That's a change of use from retail to professional office. But if they're not making any changes in the site-
Correct.
Or the exterior walls of the building, then they just do a simple change of use permit. I make sure there's enough parking, and the use is permitted in that zone-
Gotcha.
And everybody goes on their merry way.
But in this particular case, the site is changing.
In this case, they were getting, they were eliminating the covered sales area, and establishing the mobile unit coffee kiosk in a different location. And that's what I called a minor modification to the previously approved plan.
And I don't necessarily agree with you on that.
That's, that's why you're elected, and I'm sitting over here.
So are we here because of an issue with the planning commission? Are we here because you have an issue with the current, the use?
No, there's no coffee issue. There's an issue with the code, and that's why I brought it up. In fact, I drink a lot of coffee. As long as it's not the chain brand, we'll be okay. So that's where, that's where I came up, and that's where I'm at, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Other, other folks, we're presented with some choices here. We can continue city council jurisdiction and schedule a public hearing- We can continue city council jurisdiction and schedule a public hearing, which would be December 4th. We can remand the application back to the state and planning commission, or remand the application to the staff for further review. What would you folks like to do?
And I, I'd just like to clarify, hearing what the mayor said, which may not be what he read, but this never was before the planning commission, so it's not back to the planning commission. It would be back to staff or to the planning commission.
Ah.
And the most efficient method to get this in front of anybody again, or?
The, the, uh, when you say efficient, you mean...
Quickest, yes, yes.
The quickest would, would be to remand it to me with some clear direction as to how you'd like to see the previous decision changed.
And that was my intent, and that was my initial statement, so that's what I'd like to do, counsel.
Okay. So...
I'll make a motion for that.
All right, would you offer a motion?
Sure. I'd like to offer a motion to...
I have a question. Can we have a question before that?
We have more questions.
So, if that happens, and, and somebody's unhappy with Mr. Fleishman's decision, now it gets appealed before us again, right?
Yeah.
Whereas if we take it and make the decision, that's the end of it.
If it's, if it's remanded to me, and I revise my decision, and someone is unhappy with my decision, an appeal of my decision will go to the planning commission, not directly to council. And then, an appeal of the planning commission would come to council.
We have to be very careful in the event that we have those steps in appeal. Each one takes time, and I wanted to make sure we understood that we, by statute, we have to make a decision, a final decision by the city by January 11th. So, when you're evaluating how this might come out, that's something to keep in mind, that if the council takes it and we do a hearing on the 4th, then you do have plenty of time to get it done by the 11th. If we speculate that there might be appeals from Dan, there'll be time for Dan to do his new decision, then there's the appeal period, and then there's a notice period for the public hearing, and then there's also an appeal from the planning commission to the city council. One of you could call it up and shorten that sequence, but in all likelihood, if that played out, we could not make the decision by January 11th.
And what would be the result of that?
What, what happens then, Wally?
Well, then the applicant can file a mandamus and force us to approve the application.
Okay.
It muddies the water quite a bit. The applicant has the ability to waive that or extend that provision, uh, so that's also an option.
I can't imagine them wanting to, uh, the sooner the better for them, I think. Just a, a thought. Uh, Priscilla, a thought or comment there?
No, I would think that, that it would be better for all parties concerned for us to, to do the public hearing.
Yeah.
I can hear with councillor Dyckel.
Brian, would you offer your motion?
Yeah, let me look at, let me figure that out now. So, which one is that? That's, uh...
Number one.
That's number one.
That's the soonest we can get in front of us? That's fine.
They have to have 20 days to...
Gotcha. So, then therefore, I'll offer a motion to continue city council jurisdiction and schedule a public hearing, uh, on the call-up decision.
Second to that one.
And that's for December 4th.
December 4th, okay. I've got a motion and a second to continue city council jurisdiction and schedule a public hearing in this matter. Uh, this public hearing would be December 4th of this year. Uh, is there any other council discussion?
Is that correct? I want to make sure that's, that's, that's the fastest way.
Yeah, it is the fastest way to resolve, way to resolve this.
It's the fastest way to you being the final arbiter of this issue.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
So, there's my motion with a second.
Okay. Any other deliberation? Uh, Ms. Angelo, would you, uh, would you poll the group again, please?
Yes. Councillor Quigley?
Yes.
Councillor Gladwell?
Yes.
Councillor Cronquist?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, three to zero. Um, okay, that one is done for tonight. Uh, I made a, well, to me, it's an error, because I don't usually do this. I didn't ask for comments from the public earlier in the evening, because there couldn't be any, any discussion of this. There will be a chance for people to talk if they have things they need to say later in the meeting. Not much later, but a little bit later. So, uh, probably we'll see everyone on the 4th of December. All right, here we go. Staff and commission reports. Uh, Cindy and Elizabeth and the finances, bills mailed, okay? You saw that monthly finance department? Okay. And Chief Stevens, uh, police chief's report. There's no comments on the finance department. Chief?
Mayor and council, you have before you the statistical report for the month of October. Uh, the numbers are, actually, the month of September. Uh, you have the, um, numbers there in line with, uh, previous months, and, uh, I would like to say that we, uh, that, uh, the Halloween event, uh, that the officers usually respond to or, or deal with, uh, around the community and with at the fire department, went very, very smoothly like in past years. Uh, and then this last weekend, we had our annual spaghetti feed, uh, put on by the United Methodist Church on Fern Ridge Road. Uh, that was, uh, one of their highest of, of the year, or of past years. They raised over $1,400 in that one night. In fact, they actually even ran out of spaghetti that night. So, it was a great, great event, so...
Chief, our investigated incidences up, um, over 100 for, uh, the same period last year. Uh, there a, a trend there? What do you, what do you, what do you see happening?
I'd look to see what those were and what the difference is, and most of those are officer self-initiated activities. Uh, that means that there's, uh, uh, more, uh, warrants and DUIs and, uh, um, traffic incidents and things like that, that the officers are, are going out and addressing.
Do I, do I dare guess something really neat, like we're seeing more in the same time we're out there?
I'm, I'm not following what you're asking.
Well, stuff happens, right?
Yes.
And we can either see it or not.
Correct. Means that the officers are more active and they're, they're taking more action.
That's better.
Correct.
Okay, more active. I like that. Okay, that's good. Okay, anything else, chief?
Nope, that is it.
Okay. Other questions from the group on anything there? Uh, let's see, Public Works Operating Report, Mr., Mr. Lundquist.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before you tonight, you have the operating report for the month of September. I really don't have anything to add, but I would like to point out under the water system, I know this is a program that was near and dear to your heart, Mr. Mayor, is that we have installed 256 radio read meters in the month of September, which concludes all of the, uh, meters, water meters in the city are now radio read.
Okay.
So, we reduced that process from 80 hours in one month to down to one hour...
Wow.
...of reading in one month. So, we're saving 79 hours of man-hours.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
That really is.
So, I'd like to point that out to you.
That really is, yeah. I was looking at, um, a real quick thing here on, uh, your recommendations for the street projects for next year.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed, and I think I know why, um, specifically, East and West Virginia.
Mm-hmm.
And we were going to do overlay East Virginia from First to Fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I guess part of me was hoping that we'd do West Virginia, but I think that street's going to need a total rebuild, I think.
Um, they both probably could use a total rebuild.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm flipping a coin, it's East Virginia, First to Fourth, you know?
Yeah. No, I just, because of the proximity to the swimming pool and community center...
No, I understand.
Uh, it would seem like West Virginia from First, uh, over to the entrance to the, the pool would be a priority.
They're actually...
First to Evergreen or something.
That is actually rated a little bit higher than First to Fourth on the east side, yes.
Really? Okay. All right. I won't argue with the ratings. I just, it just seemed like, uh, a lot of our noise to redo streets in that area comes from West Virginia, but maybe not. Okay.
All right.
All righty. Um, that TMDL report...
Can I, can I ask Lance a question?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, can I ask Lance a question?
Well, sure.
So, when we save 79 hours, so did we just redirect the person who was doing those 79 hours, or did we actually cut 79 hours of staff time and save ourselves some money?
Well, we have a very minimal, um, crew, so what we're doing is allowing to do other jobs.
Right.
So, in essence, we're allowing, we're more efficient, and that's really the, the point of it. We're more efficient with our man-hour, our usage.
Okay. So, we didn't save 79 hours necessarily?
Well, in essence, we did. We could have that debate.
All right. Um, anything else, Lance?
Uh, no, sir. That was it.
Other questions for him? No? Uh, library director's report, Jen, please.
Mayor and council, you have my report, um, before you. I'd like to also offer that, we talked about the Friends of the Library sale last month and that it was happening. They made just under $4,000 at that sale, so I thought you guys might want to know. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Jen, I heard on pretty good authority that, uh, the Brews and Books deal is coming back in January.
The 27th of January.
Nice.
It's the very bottom on my dates to mark on your calendar.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, what, what was that?
Uh, go ahead, Jen.
It's, uh, Brews, Bites and Books, our foundation's, um, event in the evening. The one that Mark's been very excited about.
They drew a lot of people there who you didn't see, and it raised a couple thousand dollars last time around.
It's very exciting. There's a lot of excitement over it.
Okay.
If your library could use, but, yeah.
Sign.
It should be fine.
Good deal. Okay.
Sign?
At this point, presentation, comments from the public on just about anything, except, um, some of the business that we tried to deal with tonight. Anything, anything, comments from the public? Ooh, doo-doo-doo-doo. Okay. Uh, business from the city administrator, Mr. Campbell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of us still here and attending tonight, just a reminder that tomorrow is the deadline for our local elections, so to make sure to get it in your ballots, um, there is an item on the agenda for the charter review. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, business from the mayor, none right now, except that, um, uh, I am closer to, uh, a pick for the empty council seat, and, um, should have that by next meeting, um, if not then, in December, but we'll get it done. Um, business from the council, anything? Future agenda items, public hearing on annexation, comprehensive plan and zone change, rental licensing, and board and committee appointments. There are a couple of budget committee appointments, more than a couple, I think, if, uh...
Yeah, they're coming in.
She's, she's nodding positively, so, and then, uh, we'll get some of those done.
Hank?
Yes?
So, what's the process with the, with the, um, getting a new councillor on board? I mean, the, the, it closed, right? The letters of interest thing closed, right?
Oh, well, the letters, yeah.
Yeah, and so, what?
And then I'm going to submit it for your approval, and away we go.
Are you interviewing them? Are you looking at the letters?
I'm going to talk to all of them, yeah.
I was just wondering, it seems like it's, it's a long time for us to be sitting here without another person.
Uh, if you could ask one of our visitors tonight, uh, a month or two is really nothing compared to what you and Dirt, and Dirt is at, Jerry. How long did you go without a councillor?
I think the, one time was nine months.
Nine months.
So, is there a reason why we would want to, we would want to keep with that record?
We were waiting for it before.
Yeah, it's just Asian. Well, Jerry had a...
I would think we'd, we'd want to be, we would show how much more efficient we are than they were.
So, we'll, we'll get...
It took me nine months to find somebody good and credible.
Well, I'm not, I'm not after that. I just, but we're going to give that person, uh, a head start on the new year, so, uh, we'll get it done. But I'm glad you're here tonight, because I could use it. If I'm slow, hey, what? Anyway, nothing else? Let's be a jerk. What is this?